...course devoted to all 28 operas of Giuseppe Verdi, who in the year of 2013 will be celebrating his 200th birthday, and is as alive today probably in the appreciation of his art as he was during his lifetime.
I remember when the first corn came in, when the first zucchini came in, when you went directly from not having any zucchini to having too much, and your neighbors who were growing it were leaving baskets of it on your doorstep and running. All right, so I remember all the different vegetables that you couldn't get. You couldn't get Brussels sprouts all year round, you couldn't get all these things. We now have this incredible richness. Well, if you remember, how many of your moms responded to this seasonal wealth of stuff by canning and pickling their own stuff? My mom sure did, my grandmother sure did, I do, but I'm one of the only people I know that does. And I'm doing it as a matter of art rather than necessity. I'm doing it because of the fact that there's something about when you come over to my house for Christmas, I'm pulling out some of the green tomatoes that I was pickling. Oh, now, I did a bunch of those last week. You know, and pulling out the produce of an entirely different season and reminding people. What my class is going to be about is about how seasonality changed our cooking, how our cultures, all of the cultures of America, shaped our cooking. And then we're going to look into all of these things. And in the last session, we're going to have an introduction, then a lot of you are going to be telling me, what do you think we're going to be eating at the end of this century? So we're going to explore the past, the present, and the future of American cuisine in five sessions. We're joined now by Kate Kelly, author, historian, speaker. You were at many hats.
Absolutely.
Nice to see you.
I'm delighted to be here.
So you'll be teaching history courses at OSHA?
Yes, mainly cultural things having to do with American history. My first offering is called "American Moments." For winter, I'm probably going to do something on the history of the funny papers, because culturally, things like that are really important, because we read into it, you know, kind of who we are at the time. So it's an important area to talk about and fun.
That does sound like fun. So this "American Moments," there's a website that goes with it?
Well, I have a website called americacomesalive.com, and that is a lot of the basis for the material. My course itself will talk about early transportation, early communication, and then also early entertainment. And the stories range from the fact that, like, few people realize that 100 years ago, we actually had electric cars. And despite the fact that Henry Ford was very busy inventing a gas-powered car, his wife drove an electric car. And we'll explain why in the course, why she chose the electric car when he was going full force with the gas-powered cars. With airplanes, you know, again, it's less about Orville and Wilbur Wright and more about what it was like to be a passenger in early flights. And actually, the very first passengers were young guys who would wait by the bag of mail, because the early flights were made by people working for the US Post Office. They'd go down into a field, pick up the bag of mail, and go off. And if they had room on the plane, they'd let a young kid ride on the back of the plane. And those were our first passengers.
So I imagine people must love hearing these stories and sharing their own stories.
Yes, we have an opportunity to share their own stories, because that actually gives me additional material. You just, what do people remember? And just some of the finer points of what life was like, you know, when all of us were growing up.
I would think when we're thinking about an older learner, that that's really a key factor there.
Well, and it's really fun. And I must say, something about the class brings up positive memories. People love sharing their information, and they leave the class just talking about it so much. So it's one of those things, like, somehow it hits a very positive nerve, and it reminds you about what kind of country we live in. Like, we talk about the fact that sometimes we get depressed when we hear the national news and all the political infighting in Congress and that sort of thing. And I always remind people, look locally, because if you turn around and look in your local community, you've got some terrific person running a Meals on Wheels program or somebody running a, you know, Humane Society.
I love that. So you're looking at cultural history, really bringing a positive perspective.
Absolutely, and reminding people, we are a great people. It's a great country to live in.
I just wish, would you make one exception? Maybe could you have one under-50 learner in your class?
Absolutely.
All right.
I'll be glad to have you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Back to you, Paul.
Thank you, Scott. We're here visiting with Carol Emmerling, and Carol is with the Plato Society. Now, you may not be familiar with it. So Carol, could you explain to us what the Plato Society is and how long it's been around?
Well, first, this is the 32nd year of Plato, so it's been here a long time. It's one of the premier groups in the United States that does, basically, retirement learning. We are participatory, though.
Yes.
They don't listen at us, we listen to them.
Would, like, senior executives who are in their retirement come to you?
Senior executives plus anybody. Anybody who wants to be interested and alert can come.
And the emphasis is on education, as I understand it?
Absolutely, on education, but all kinds of education. We have study discussion groups, which are the core of the group, but they can be discussion groups on anything. We have 75 of them a year, 25 per trimester.
Wow.
And it can be anything from science to magic to history to anything that is of interest to us.
And you were telling me you have some major speakers as well with some of your larger events.
Yes, we have seven colloquiums a year, and there are things like Pulitzer Prize winner or the Archbishop of Los Angeles or Sam Friedlander, who is the Holocaust person. So they're wonderful. And Peter Bart is going.
Peter Bart from The Hollywood Reporter, bless his heart.
He's going to be there on Thursday.
I wonder if he'll share the real secrets of what he learned.
Well, it certainly sounds like it. It's, I don't know if he's going to hold anything back, if the way he's positioned that. But we also have brown bags, which are some people who are members of Plato have things like how they, what they did on trips, what hobbies they are, what they had in their, in their working life.
Carol, it sounds fascinating, and seriously, I recommend the Plato Society. It's easy to look up, you have a website, of course.
Absolutely.
And we'll have your contact numbers at the bottom of the screen. We have to take a short break for a public service announcement. We'll be right back.
I am who I am.
I'm competitive.
I am independent.
Self-sufficient.
I help others become independent.
But in a disaster, my independence could be threatened.
But not with SNAP.
SNAP is an emergency preparedness website that helps those who may need extra assistance in a disaster, including a registry to let emergency personnel know you may need extra assistance. Simply register at snap.lacounty.gov.
Plan.
Prepare.
Register.
An emergency can happen at any time.
Earthquake!
That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first-aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, get out of there!
Get the message? Be prepared.
Get out of the house!
The holiday season is upon us. And although for most people, it brings thoughts of joy and family unity, for many older adults and family caregivers, that's not the case. For many family caregivers, the holiday season gives rise to stress, frustration, and anger, because they're already overwhelmed with the activities of daily living. We commonly refer to these feelings as holiday blues, holiday depression, or holiday stress. Stressed-out family caregivers may view traditional holiday preparations as an additional drain, and that they are trying to maintain things as they had been in the past, but are overlooking that the circumstances in their current life require changing things. These feelings are all too common around the holiday months, but especially around December. It tends to get worse. Although holiday blues may be short-lived, lasting from a few days up to a few weeks before or after the holidays, it can range from feelings of sadness to thoughts of suicide. Older adults often feel sadness, loneliness, and/or isolation, which is then magnified by the memories and expectations of holiday cheer. Symptoms sometimes mimic clinical depression, and may include headaches and having low energy all the time, sleeping too much or too little, changes in appetite resulting in weight gain or weight loss, agitation and anxiety, sad or irritated moods, excessive or inappropriate feelings of guilt. Sometimes there's difficulty with thinking or concentration, or there may be decreased pleasure and interest in usual activities. Some factors that may contribute to a family caregiver's holiday stresses include financial problems, where a person cannot do what they would like to do, fatigue from overdoing it, especially if the person is also caring for another person, unrealistic expectations of visitors, traveling, or gift-giving, inability to be with one's family or loved ones, memories of past holiday celebrations, especially if there's been a recent death in the family, and the perception that everyone else is happier. So what can you do about it? Try some of the following tips. Avoid alcohol, which is a depressant, and overeating, as they may intensify feelings of depression. Set a budget for gift-giving, so that you don't overspend and get anxious or worried. Allow yourself to feel sad, but don't let it overpower you. Acknowledge the past memories, and then focus on how to make the best of what you have now. And talking with others without complaining too much can help you feel better. Try journal writing. It may be a new concept to you, but it is worth the benefits. Eat right, exercise, and get plenty of rest, maybe a midday nap even. Get some sunlight, but remember to bundle up as necessary. Sunlight plays a large role in our moods. Getting 20 minutes of sunlight a day by being outdoors or sitting at a window, even if it's overcast, can help tremendously. If symptoms of depression persist longer than two weeks, seek professional help. Start with your primary care physician. And have a happy holiday.
We're joined now by Marlene Zweig, who's going to tell us a little bit more about this wonderful program. Hi, Marlene, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
So, Marlene, I understand you've been a member of this program since its beginning?
Yes, I just looked into it. It was one of the happiest serendipities of my life. I've always been an overachiever, and I had just retired, and I was really a recovering workaholic, and I had to find something to do to fill my time. And I was leafing through the UCLA catalog, and I saw a program, OSHA, that I'd never heard of, that was aimed at lifelong learning for people over 50. And I thought, what is this? This sounds like something that I'm very interested in. You know, in my youth, I was certainly very interested in academics. And, you know, 40 years later, I hadn't really ever taken a college course.
So you were able to rekindle those flames and get engaged, and you've been enjoying this continuously since?
Absolutely, absolutely. And it has been a godsend, both intellectually and socially, because I've made so many friends in the program, and I've taken courses that have enriched me intellectually, and I've taken courses that were just fun, like rock and roll, through the '60s, reliving my life. It has been an utter delight.
That's fantastic, something that's fun and probably most beneficial to your overall life and health. What would you say to people watching at home who are sort of on the fence and thinking, could I do that?
Come join us, you'll love it. Try one course, because it is very affordable. It's one of the most affordable programs for older adults that's out there. And you should just try it, and I would almost guarantee that you're going to love it, so...
With that, if I had my prescription pad, I'd give you a big stack, and you can write prescriptions for OSHA lifelong learning.
Exactly.
For everybody out there, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Lovely talking with you.
Lovely talking with you.
Back to you, Paul.
We're going to have a brief visit with Steve Berry, one of the instructors here at the OSHA Institute. You have a fun course, "The History of Rock and Roll."
Well, it is a fun course, because it gives everybody an opportunity to kind of relive the soundtrack of their lives, and then we go back. I started, actually, about three years ago, starting with the '50s and bringing it all the way through, you know, the '60s and whatever. I was involved in the record industry in 19, it started about 1963, about the same time.
Same time I was on the Don Avicii Show.
You were having big hits, and Shelley Fabray was. And in fact, we, my partner and I even wrote some songs for her.
Isn't that great?
And we eventually started to, you know, to make it as songwriters and then producers under the wings of Lou Adler, who was kind of our mentor. And so I've been in the record industry for my entire life.
But Steve, for many seniors especially, they often have not yet recognized the threads that go through the music business, the influences of Bing Crosby back in the day, or big bands and Frank Sinatra. Though, the story you told about Frank Sinatra was wonderful.
Well, the interesting thing about Frank Sinatra is that, you know, I've always been a fan of his. And I found that over the years, that in talking to and working with Rod Stewart and working with, and certainly listening to an entire lecture that Bono did on Frank Sinatra, rock and roll people love Frank Sinatra because of his attitude. You know, they looked at him as, you know, and they looked at his group, The Rat Pack, as the first supergroup. And they did all the things that the rock and roll was doing.
The thing I always admired about Sinatra was the musicians, the quality studio musicians considered him a musician, that he actually made musical contributions.
Well, not only that, but if you, you know, I had the fortune of going, being in the studio a couple times when he was singing, because he worked out of Weston Recorders up on Sunset there, and we all kind of worked in those studios. But every musician will always say that they played better, and that everything came up in level when Sinatra was in the room. Because first of all, they knew he had to get it in two or three takes, because after that, he was gone.
Right, other duties to perform.
Exactly, so, I mean, everybody was really on their best, and he just, he brought things to a great level.
Well, thank you so much for visiting with us.
Pleasure.
We appreciate it. Steve Berry's course on the history of rock and roll. And now, Scott, back to you.
Thanks, Paul. Now we're joined by Lisa Munoz, the program director here at the OSHA Institute for Lifelong Learning. Hi, Lisa, how are you?
Good, thanks, how are you?
Nice to see you. So we're having some really interesting conversations here about the older adult learner.
Sure. The older adult learner is a very interesting learner. It's a lifelong learner. And we have found through UCLA Extension that we, our adult learning population is very goal-oriented, mostly for professional reasons. But when you get to an age 50-plus, you really find a different kind of set of goals, right? They're looking to reconnect, really, to themselves. They're looking to reconnect to social circles. They're looking to reconnect to their intellect, and really to their whole lives. We've heard so many stories, it's very exciting to hear, of people saying that the program really almost saved their lives, because it's been able to bring them back into involvement and participation in life.
I love hearing those stories. I've heard those stories repeatedly in my own clinical practice, and that's why we're here today. And with people living longer, and the life course is really changing.
It really does. You know, men and women are both are living much longer than expected. And, you know, I think we can all see that the traditional model of retirement at age 50 or 55, and then just kind of sitting back and relaxing, just doesn't hold true anymore. People really need to do something, they need to be out in the world, engaging their minds and their bodies and their spirits. So it's really wonderful and very rewarding to see that the OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute gives people that opportunity. It gives them a place to do that among other like-minded individuals, and it really, again, lets them kind of reconnect to life.
That's absolutely what we're trying to talk about here on Aging Well in L.A., reconnecting, staying active, engaged, living longer, better. So tell us, how can people find out more about this? I mean, we're sold.
Sure, no, we have, we've set up a great area of communication on our website, so that people can visit our website, they can call us at the UCLA Extension.
Okay, we'll put that number below, I'm sure, here. We'll make sure that number's there.
So they can call us, they can email us, they can visit our website, all of the information about joining our fall, winter, spring, summer classes. All the information that they might want is there.
Well, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
I hope a lot of people are inspired by this program and get out there, back into the classroom for a whole new adventure.
Great, thank you so much, Scott.
Thank you.
Well, I hope you've enjoyed our visit with the OSHA Institute as much as we did. Scott, this is like a hidden gem.
Absolutely, I had a great time here today, learning more about the program and seeing wonderful examples of people staying active and engaged.
And there's an interesting educational aspect to this. You're not being graded on your participation, you are participating.
Absolutely, and I truly believe that this kind of participation and involvement really is a key step in living longer and living better.
And living better, that's the real key. Well, thank you so much for joining us on Aging Well in L.A. If you have comments and suggestions, or you're interested in talking to any of the people we visited with today, please give us a call, let us know. Thanks again for watching Aging Well in L.A.
Thank you.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Emergency preparedness is everyone's responsibility. However, for people with disabilities, it's especially critical that we take the necessary steps to ensure our survivability. In Los Angeles, approximately 1.2 million individuals have some type of disability. It may be you, a family member, a neighbor, or a coworker. There are three important steps to prepare for an emergency. First step, have an emergency supply kit at home, at work, and in the car. If you have children or children with disabilities, make sure their school has an emergency supply kit to assist your child in the event of an emergency. Step number two, create a family emergency plan and practice, practice, practice. Be sure to include all family members and out-of-state contact in these drills, and inquire about your child's school emergency plan. And step number three, learn about and keep informed about different types of emergencies that could occur in your area. You should ensure that you're able to survive alone for a minimum of three days with water, food, and any necessary medication or equipment that you utilize for your specific disability. Your emergency supply kit should include copies of important documents, such as medical insurance cards, prescriptions for medications or eyeglasses, instructions on how to operate your specific equipment, driver's license, financial documents, and pictures. For your pet or service animal, be sure to include extra food, water, and treats, medications, a first-aid kit, additional collar with ID tag, and an extra harness or leash. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
It is? It is now 10:00 a.m. This will be the forum call for the city council meeting for Wednesday, December 7. Thank you, Mr. Alakad, and Mr. Gardnus, Mr. Westin, I'm Council President. Four members are present. Mr. Englander is excused, everyone else is getting to be here. So the following members please come to chambers. Mr. Mezar, Mr. Grex, Mr. Corrigan, Mr. LeBolle, Mr. Clark, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosenthal, and Council President for City, please come to chambers. It is now 10:00 a.m. We are ready to begin for today, December 7. Mr. Garcetti has arrived. We now have five more members to get the quorum call for the council meeting. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Coetz, Mr. Corret, Mr. LeBonge, Mr. Park, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, please come to chambers. We have five, we need five more to begin our meeting for today, December 7. Thank you.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Wednesday, December 7, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Welcome to the chambers, all the guests who have joined us here today, and city staff who have both taken time to be here in council chambers. We welcome you, as well as our viewers on Channel 35, those watching through the Internet at lacity.org, and anybody listening in on council phone by calling 213-621-CITY. Also, we may be observed, and also testimony may be given from our remote council chambers in San Pedro and Van Nuys, where you can save some time, cut some traffic and pollution, and follow these meetings and testify remotely from those locations. I want to thank those council members who are here on time, council members Alakon, Gardines, LeBonge, Wesson, and Zine. Mr. Englander is excused today, and we still have a vacancy in Council District 15, but we do expect 13 council members, so the following council members are late if they'll please join us as soon as possible. Council members Weezer, Coetz, Corcoran, Parks, Perry, Reyes, and Rosendahl. We require 10 members or two-thirds of our body to constitute a quorum and begin the business of the meeting, which we will do as soon as we have them. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We have our agendas available online and posted in city buildings 72 hours in advance of these meetings, 24 hours in advance for our special meetings, and we also have all the supporting material for these meetings, and any of the items that we vote on are available for the public through our city clerk and online through the council file index. We also are happy to take public testimony on items that are before us. They either receive a public hearing in council or in the committee that precedes the council. If they've already had a hearing in committee, it requires the council to reopen a public hearing, otherwise, we will have just satisfied the requirement in committee. But any items that have not yet had a public hearing, if we fill out the cards, or members of the public fill out the cards, we will have a public hearing here in council. Furthermore, part of the meeting is for general comments. Those are for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under the city's jurisdiction, and if you'd like to be heard on any of those items, you can also fill out a speaker card here or in Van Nuys and San Pedro. Just put "public comment" in the upper right corner, and we'll be happy to hear your comments. We are up to seven members now, still awaiting council members Weezer and Coetz, Corcoran and Parks, Perry and Reyes. As soon as we have those members, we will begin the meeting. We have 32 items that we'll be covering here today in council, and again, anybody who wishes to be heard on those, agendas are available here in the back, as well as posted in Van Nuys and San Pedro. Thank you, Ms. Perry. That takes us to eight members, still awaiting Mr. Weezer, Mr. Coetz, Mr. Corcoran, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Reyes. Thank you for your patience while we wait those late members. We're just one member shy now. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. We're just awaiting Mr. Coetz, Mr. Corcoran, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Reyes, and we'll begin the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Parks. With that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Gardines, Englander, Weezer, Coetz, Corcoran, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Eleven members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minute.
All right. Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. LeBonge seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Alakon moves, Mr. Gardines seconds. Those will be approved as well. Colleagues, before we go through the agenda, if I could ask everybody, this is the 70th anniversary today of Pearl Harbor. It is a moment which our country has marked in the past, and if I could ask everybody in chambers for a moment of silence to commemorate December 7, if I could ask everybody to rise for a moment on the 70th anniversary. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Remember those who came before us and who were lost that day. If we can now run through the agenda, colleagues, any items that you wish to call special, now would be the time to direct your attention to the agenda for those items. If we can go through the first items, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, items 1 through 8 are items noticed for a public hearing. There is a request from a member to continue item 8 to Tuesday, December 13.
Okay, we'll continue number 8 without objection until the 13th.
Pardon me, sir. Furthermore, item number 1 is a PCN, and a motion is required.
Since that's in Council District 12, and Mr. Zine, do you have a motion on number 1?
The city attorney wants a motion on that, so hold on to the table. We're drafting a motion on that to support what the District 12, Mr. Englander requested.
We don't have to draft a motion, it just has to move to support or not. Okay, so we'll wait. Let's hold that on the table.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. Any other specials items 2 through 7? We'll hold one on the table, 2 through 7? If not, let's go ahead. Sorry, do you have any numbers, Mr. LeBonge?
Yeah, I will give them to you.
We're just 2 through 7 right now. Anybody wishing to call 2 through 7 special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 9 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item 12 has been submitted and distributed for council's consideration.
Okay. Yes, Mr. LeBonge?
Mr. Reyes, on your river ones, 9 through 11?
Okay.
Okay, for Mr. Reyes, and then for me, 14.
All right, Mr. LeBonge, 14. That leaves 12 and 13. Anybody wishing to call 12 or 13 special?
12.
12 special for Mr. Gardines. 14, Mr. LeBonge called special, we'll put you down as well, Mr. Weezer. Anybody wishing to call 13 special? Only one left. Mr. Corcoran, you can call special if you, just 'cause. No? All right, we'll go ahead and vote on it. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
The status of L.A. DWP's Employee Health and Dental Plans renewal efforts is noted and filed. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 15 through 23 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, do we have any cards on those? We do not, I do not see any. We have a card?
Mr. President, I believe we do.
On item 20, we have a card. Call that special for cards in the public, and we'll close the other public hearings. I'd like to call 15 special. Any other specials, Mr. Zine? 19, Mr. Zine?
15 priority on the hearing, since we have representatives from the LAPD here.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Mr. Corcoran?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that items 16 and 17 be continued for one week, please.
Okay, till the 14th, without objection. We'll continue both of those, items 16 and 17. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and take the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 24 through 27 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Mr. Parks, your guidance.
We recommend all of these go on open session.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take those up, then. Does any other members wish to go to closed session? If there's no cards on those, we'll close the public hearings. Go ahead, let's go through each of those items.
Very good, sir. Item 24, there is a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled Eric Slimko versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $300,000.
Okay. Any members wishing to be heard on that? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That settlement is approved. Next item, please.
Item 25, there is a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus Monterey Hills Development Corporation, consolidated with Joaquin Guavara and others versus Conteco Incorporated and others, in the amount of $275,000.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 25 special or to be heard on 25? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 25 and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 26, there is a recommendation relative to the posting and undertaking to stay enforcement of judgment and orders against the city in the case entitled Mohammed and Roxana Shadri versus City of Los Angeles, and that is to post $785,823.95.
Okay. Anybody wishing to comment on item 26? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 26 and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved.
Item number, pardon me, sir. Item number 27, there's a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled Maxim Kruemer and Ala Kruemer versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $215,000.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item, 27? Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Very good, sir. On the continuation agenda, items 28 through 32 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, I'd like to call those special, take them up together, and we can go to the last two items, please. I'm sorry, that's, I'm calling 28, 29, 30 special, 31, 32 as well. I'll call those all special. Yeah, all of them special, please.
Very good, sir.
Before we begin public comment, colleagues, we have a colleague who is celebrating his birthday today, and wanted to wish Bernard Parks a very happy birthday today. Made it through. Made it through another, another year. We hope it's a very happy birthday. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're still, you're still in your, your early 50s, and we appreciate it.
This is my 30th birthday.
There you go. It is the second anniversary of your 34th birthday. We appreciate that. All right, with that, we'll go to our general public comment. This is for items not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under our jurisdiction.
No.
There's two minutes per speaker, and we have a clock to help guide your time at the podium. Our first speaker is Scott Smith. If you'd like to come forward, Mr. Smith. After that, will be James Shaw. Good morning.
Good morning, Scott Smith, and I handle public relations for the Union of Medical Marijuana Patients. I don't happen to use marijuana, medical or otherwise, and I'm a journalist by training. When I came to this industry, I started studying the comments from the various sides, and when Councilman Weezer brought Michael Larson to his press conference last week, Mr. Larson, who is the head of a homeowners association, had some comments, which I read online in the Eagle Rock Patch and the 10 pages of comments from residents, and he compared the medical marijuana patient associations to massage parlors, illegal bars, gambling houses. He talked about the victims of crime being other law-abiding businesses who follow the rules, the law, and sometimes take years to open, while pot shops are open and operating as they please with no regulation or accountability, and they're threatening children, and so forth. And then, he stated that L.A.'s medical marijuana pot shops are ostensibly meant to provide medicine to the seriously ill but are making obscene drug profits to the tune of more than $1 billion this year. This has been the aim of this industry at the expense of our neighborhoods and those seriously ill whom they exploit and mock. They're clearly selling marijuana for recreational purposes. I'd like to point out that this man apparently has never been in a medical marijuana dispensary. Anyone who has and who has talked to the patients know that there are serious medically documented illnesses being treated, and if you impose a ban, what's going to happen is 250,000 L.A. residents are going to be thrown out on the streets to buy marijuana. The Union of Medical Marijuana Patients has proposed a verification system that would be a much better alternative. Thank you.
All right, thank you, James Shaw, our next speaker, and then Cheryl Eickley.
Good morning, chairperson, council members. Councilman Weezer has proposed a ban on medical cannabis patient associations operating in patient-accessible commercial real estate. I'm here today to tell you there is an alternative to banning. The city does not have to ban, the city can limit the number of patient associations operating dispensaries in commercial real estate, and assure there is no diversion or profit, and collect fees by using third-party verification. In collaboration with a number of brilliant people over the last four years, we designed a product called AgSite Secure, which verifies that the medicine being grown or possessed at any particular cultivation, transportation, or storage site is legal based on the patients who own that medicine. This is not a new product. We anticipated the concerns expressed by the Second District Court years ago. AgSite Secure is the solution to the current dilemma facing municipalities. Now, you'll hear me say it again and again, it's the teacher in me, having taught 10 years for LAUSD. If I can't use visual prompts, or I'm not able to get my students engaged in hands-on activities, and all I have is audio, I better say it at least seven different ways. There is an alternative to banning. The solution is third-party verification. The only service provider currently available is AgSite Secure. We have distrib, I, if we haven't distributed your brochures, again, I will do so shortly. AgSite will contact your offices as a follow-up to see if you're interested in a formal presentation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Cheryl Eickley, followed by Daniel Garcia, and our final speaker will be Arnold Sacks. Cheryl Eickley.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Eickley. I live in District 4, and I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles, and I speak for myself today. I'm here to ask either the president or the council if you guys would be willing to create a committee, or maybe some working groups that can identify and address the issues of public concern related to the Occupy movement and the 99%. The city may have stopped our encampment, but they have not stopped our movement. The city may have arrested me last week, but they can't arrest an idea whose time has come. That's a saying we have in the movement. And the time has come for the city to take bold actions towards addressing these issues that we bring up, redressing the grievances of our times. And I'm here just to ask the city if there are more ways that we can build bridges between these chambers and the concerned citizens throughout this very large city of ours. There's a lot of issues, like, I don't know if you guys heard about the actions we took yesterday in regards to Nationwide Day of Action for foreclosed homes. We occupied homes. On Saturday, we occupied the auction for foreclosed homes. I know that the president himself has introduced quite a few resolutions or city files, council files, that have to do with foreclosures and this issue specifically. I personally would like to learn more so that I can get more concerned citizens connected to these programs and see if they qualify or can be helped in any further way. I appreciate all your guys' time with these issues. I know today is vastly different than yesterday. Yesterday, the entire chamber was so full, they had to open an overflow room. Today, there's barely anybody here, but I want to let you know that I'm still here, and I'm still concerned about these issues, and I want to do what I can as a concerned citizen to redress those grievances. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Garcia, followed by Arnold Sacks. And that'll conclude our public speakers for today.
Good morning, city council, and then you guys here, you can advocate for the A or ECA in, in, in Broyo Heights. I want to know if it's possible for the city council to approve a PSA, Public Service Announcement, for voting, in support of voting on, on people with disabilities. I think, I think the people should be encouraged to vote, and I think a public service announcement would be a perfect area for the city of LA to improve the voting registration, the voting registration and voting activity for a lot of people with disabilities. And I want to say... And I want to say that on the side, that I wonder, maybe you should do the same thing about housing, affordable and accessible housing, about making a PSA too, about how the city can improve the affordable housing and accessible housing units. And if you are successful in doing that, then L.A. will become the number one PSA announcement from this area. Please, let me—let me have the PSA that we know we deserve. And it will cost you less than 1.2 million dollars that you—that you need to the— I'm Montiel, Mr. Montiel. I think it would cost even less. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. And our final speaker, Arnold Sacks. And then we'll go to item number 15, our next item up. Mr. Sacks, good morning.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. I'd like to start off with reviewing today's L.A. Times. This is in the L.A. Extra. Mayor didn't know about payout. Well, there's two parts to this. You could write a lot of books about what the mayor doesn't know. And when it says about the payout, it's talking about what the ousted housing chief got. So I'm wondering, does that mean he knew about the payout that went to his assistant, Jeff Carr, who was still on his staff while he was doing something else and getting 700— a couple of hundred thousand dollars for the last six months? Doesn't say in that story. Then I'd like to talk a little bit about LAX and some problems that have come up there. We've heard there's problems with customs. Some people want to talk about expanding refrigeration complex to Ontario Airport. This is from 11/22. Lawa—this is—Lawa does not regulate where planes fly, and when the economy falters, airlines restrict their flights and schedules to locations where they can make the most profits. Accordingly, secondary airports in communities are disproportionately impacted. That's from Gina Marie Lindsay, I'm quoting. But what she failed to say is Lawa sets the rates at Ontario Airport. So if the rates are higher and you're doing it by a pound and your planes weigh, like, I don't know, 200 tons, that's a lot of pounds. So maybe if they lowered the rates, more flights would go to Ontario. Then there would be some economic development. But that's not discussed. And as far as to count the inspectors, politicians pushed for FAA deal at LAX 81111. Who was here? What's her name? Who's the legislature—the state legislator? That's very—damn.
Janison.
No. Barbara Boxer.
Okay.
Why wasn't it discussed when she was here in August?
Thank you. Thank you. I was just trying to get that name for you. I thought that's the one you're looking for. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. All right. That closes public comment for today. Thank you for the public comment. Mr. Labons, did you have a comment?
I was going to tell Barbara Boxer is the United States Senator. And Arnold, that's the first time you've ever made a mistake, so go back to school and learn who your federal representatives are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, we'll do number 15. All right. Number 15, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item 15, called special for Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I can ask our LAPD staff, Detective Blocker, come forward.
Put the captain in the center hot seat. He's used to that one.
Good morning. We really appreciate you being here and the good, hard work of the department on—this is colleagues looking at the quarterly report, which was a big part of what the council asked for when we started attacking the historical backlog of DNA kits that had not been— and DNA evidence that had not been processed to make sure that we could eliminate our historic backlog. What was great in this report is obviously the historic backlog, which was kind of an artificial line, but we said, you know, December 2008, everything that we have that has not been yet tested, seven—sorry, 6,132 sexual assault evidence kits has been eliminated. And that was great news. We know that since then, there was—there's still been about 405 kits, right, that from December 8th on still have to be processed, or may have even better numbers since the report was given. But I want to, one, thank you for the hard work and the resources that you've put on this, and thank the council for the resources you've allocated to make sure that we can provide justice for victims of sexual assault. But a couple of questions I wanted to look at is, one, as you develop the details of a tracking system, as we looked at the controller's report, that was still one of the outstanding items. Can LAPD figure out and commit to a turnaround time for analyzing those post-2008 rape kits and future untested kits? That's my first question for you. Any other information you'd like to give? Thanks.
Thank you, Commander Michael Moriarty, on behalf of the department.
And don't worry about that demotion he gave you as captain.
I'm sorry. It is commander, I'm sorry, Mike.
As long as Wendy Rule gets it right, I'm good with captain.
Yeah, that check on every other Wednesday. Okay.
Councilman Garcetti, that 405, that represents our current production.
Okay.
And to my left is our lab director, Greg Matheson. And we are currently processing, ongoing in real time.
Mm-hmm. So where are we in real time, you think, with that number right now?
Well, the real number floats right around that. That's the number of cases that are currently in process.
So those are in the process. In terms of looking at—making sure there isn't another backlog, do you feel the tracking system is necessary for that? Or do you feel on top of being able to make sure that there's no backlog at growth?
The tracking system is absolutely necessary. We're dealing with multiple antiquated systems. Our automated property management information system is a crucial component, and that's very fragile. That needs to be upgraded and integrated. We currently have a consultant that was hired through—I had an existing city contract that's looking at the needs assessment. And they originally anticipated having an RFP for this system that will be overarching of the existing legacy systems in early March. The latest thing is I think they're confident they may have it within the next 60 days. However, they're still talking to the user group of those systems.
And so that's RFP out, and then it'll be turned around in a couple more months before we'd have somebody up and running to help us start to implement?
Correct. It's anticipated in discussions that would probably take three years to build out such a system.
Really? Second, a big focus of ours has been, obviously, on the staffing and training. Can you give us an update on where we're at with staffing and training for the in-house analysts?
Okay. As far as the staffing goes, we have filled all of the positions that the city has given us new. However, during the time of our training, we have also had some attrition. Both people leaving the employment of the city. And the reality is, a number of our promotional positions came from in-house. Several of our new criminals actually were lab techs with us.
Okay.
So we have submitted a request for an unfreeze for those attrition positions.
Okay. We'll work with Mr. Coretts on those in Personnel Committee. Obviously, that's a high priority area, but if there are issues there, I'll work with Mr. Coretts and Mr. Englander as Chair of Public Safety, because those are critically important to us, and we've stated that. So let us know about that.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. Congratulations on the special. You know, these can be unnoticed moments that go by, but it's important for us to be able to say thank you, to praise the work that you've done, to keep this going, though, because, colleagues, in tough budget times, we cannot let up in terms of the funding, making sure things like the unfreezing of these positions until we have a place in which there's no backlog. The tracking system we all want can be one of the best in the country, so continue down that path, and we fully support you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And on behalf of the department, I want to acknowledge the efforts of Detective James Blocker.
Yes.
He truly is the glue that has held us together as far as getting the historical backlog done.
Absolutely.
And he is not an empire builder. He keeps trying to build himself out of a job, and he has done an outstanding job.
You saw Godfather III, right? Let's keep pulling you back in. Thank you very much.
Well, we're not done yet, Commander. Mr. Coretts.
I also just wanted to commend you on eliminating this backlog and just point out, as I sometimes like to do, in the budgetary process, it's always important to not only work harder but to think smarter. And eliminating this backlog, which is a direct roadmap often to criminals, is a critical part of why our police department has been so effective. It's not just that we have more officers, but it's also that we're using technology and doing things smarter. And eliminating this backlog, I think, is one of the smartest things we've done, and I commend you on accomplishing a difficult task that I was somewhat skeptical we would get done this quickly. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have one comment card on this. Arnold Sacks? And just stand by a moment, and then we'll take a vote on the matter.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for letting me speak, sir. With all due respect to the work that's being done, I have a real problem with what the gentleman said about the equipment that is going out for request for proposal, that it's a fragile piece of equipment that needs to be upgraded, updated. This is not a new thing, evidently. And that's a pretty sorry excuse. I'm sorry to say that, but that's the fact. You've got equipment that you need to do this testing, and it's an integral part of the performance. You can't sit around and wait till your tires go bald before you decide you want to go up to the mountains and go driving. Same kind of analogy. If that's an integral part of the equipment that needs to be tested, why the wait? And a three-year timeframe for a request for proposal to put this thing into implementation? You already had a backlog. Maybe it was part of the reason, but I don't know. But to say that the equipment failure, the equipment— the stability of the equipment is part of the reason, that just doesn't cut it. I'm very sorry to hear that.
All right. That matter is now be forced for a vote. Colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much, Commander. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Clerk, there's a request on the closed session items 24, 27. Send those forthwith, please.
Mr. President, is that 24 and 27 or 24 through 27?
24 through 27. According to—yes, 24 through 27, forthwith.
Very good, sir.
That's at the request of the city attorney, so let's do that. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number nine, called special for Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, number nine, sir. I think you have 9, 10, 11—9, 10, 11?
Yes, we take them all together.
Okay.
That'd be great.
9, 10, 11.
Thank you. And colleagues, I just want to thank Councilman Labons for making sure we call this special. There's been a lot of work done with the LA River Committee, and 9, 10, 11 speaks to very real steps in terms of policy development that allows us to influence the space, the areas around and along the corridor. The overlay zone that is being established is a special use district. What that does, it helps property owners orientate their buildings. It looks at how we look at our streets, enhances landscaping, enhances stormwater harvesting technologies. It allows us to bring together a river corridor and a riverfront district in a very real way. For that, I want to thank the Planning Department and all the departments involved in this process, engineering, river sanitation, all the folks who have been making a tremendous effort in bringing this to life. It also adds to predictability for property owners and investors who want to come along the corridor and move this process forward. On the other items, we have the ability to essentially look at a list of—
Mr. Reyes, Mr. Reyes, hold on.
Thank you.
Sergeant Arms, can you quiet down the chambers? Staff that's on the side aisles, you'll take your conversations to the back, please. You're disrupting the meeting. Thank you. Mr. Reyes, continue, please.
On the other items, we had the water and power who's working with us along the corridor. They're looking at the maintenance and looking at the right-of-ways along the river. If you jog, if you run, if you essentially bike along the corridor, you see some areas that are not being well taken care of. Water and Power has invested time and resources to start working with communities and how we look at landscaping, how we create the greening effect, and get away from this industrial feel that certain corridors have along the river. So incrementally, you see this tremendous change occurring. Also, we have a series of projects and listings. You see the city family going out to the universities, working with local high schools, working with the community, and establishing a link with our community members so that we can bring forth the concept of how we use the river corridor and bring it back to life, not only in its physical form, but socially, educationally, and recreationally. All of these elements help us compete for federal grants, federal resources. We can demonstrate that the city is moving in a direction we are able to absorb federal resources as they come down the pipeline in the future. So I want to thank my colleagues on the Ad Hoc River Committee, Councilman Huizar, Councilman Labons, and the previous council members who sat there with me as we went through this process. So it's not just a lot of glamour. There's a lot of work. There's a list of projects, a list of accomplishments that's rather daunting. I want to thank the city family for stepping up, especially during these tough budget periods that we are going through as a city. So again, thank you, Council President, for all this work.
Thank you. Mr. Labons.
I just want to thank you, Ed Jacette, and Mr. Garcetti, and those of us along the river, including you, Mr. Zein, because the Los Angeles River starts in your district where the Bell and Calabasas Creeks come together and right there by Canoga Park High School and through Mr. Carter's district, a beautiful suburb of the basin, and Mr. Kocori and Mr. Coretts. There's a great opportunity here, and this is a plan that, over generations, will affect change and really capture what is open space. And I don't want us to forget to hug a wash, because the wash is a great offshoot there to connect to the Angeles National Forest. Don't want to forget these other opportunities that exist. So we really have a plan here that can go further. And also, I need your help in the future to keep the bikeway on the river, because more and more people are using their bikes and also families are enjoying it. So thank the staff and Dr. Armstrong from the Bureau of Engineering and Water and Power for their constant efforts as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Labons, to show your knowledge of the schools in the city of Los Angeles. Canoga Park High School, the name of the school, Canoga Park High School, is the what?
Hunters. Hunters.
You get it again. Very good. Very good. That's why you're the historian. Thank you. So this matter is now—these matters are be forced, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please. 29? 29 to 32. So let's go 29 to 32. Mr. Garcetti's requested 29 through 32.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just briefly take these together and want to thank members of the film community, Film L.A., our CEO that's been working on this, and folks from the guilds and others who have been helping us. You know, we've been convening—we had our first breakfast on November 10th with a group from the film industry, and the jobs committee is continuing the good work of Mr. Alacon and trying to really problem-solve a lot of the work that is needed to be done to make Los Angeles as film-friendly as possible or filming-friendly as possible. We all know that this is our most significant industry. It is literally our face to the world. No other location in anywhere, past or present, can match our global cultural influence. But there are four motions here today that I ask for your support on. One is to look at Department of Transportation's review of its parking operations and film zones. And we had the department who's here again today as well, and thank you for your testimony as well, to try to make sure that when we have areas that are cordoned off for filming that we have—and for those scouts and others who are going out to look at locations, that we have a smooth cooperation between our city departments and our filming. So this will go forward with your approval today, so we'll be able to look at some of those issues and get a report back from DOT in 30 days on the best practices and actions to improve the work that we do between Department of Transportation and our filming. Secondly, there's one here that encourages—it looks at filming at various locations in order to encourage filming in Los Angeles, specifically looking at issues in Mr. Rosendahl's district in Venice Beach. We're going to be working and seeing what the county and city can do together to make filming in Venice Beach less difficult. And also around county health policies, in which our health department, the county, has taken a kind of curious bent on the caterers that are on our film location sites. And so we're going to coordinate and put together a work group together with the county on that to see—I've spoken with Supervisor Mark Ridley-Thomas and a number of producers who have had issues, both with beach filming and also with our catering services in our filming locations, and to move forward on that. Third, we have LAPD staffing requirements. This is really around the idea of when people shake down film productions illegally for money and basically are able to stop productions or threaten to stop productions because it's happening in their neighborhood. Businesses or others who say that they—if they're not paid off, essentially, they will stop filming from happening. And making sure that LAPD has the resources, which is something for all of us when it comes to budget time, to look at, because they're woefully understaffed, but they have done, nevertheless, a good job when called on by the film industry. But we want to also work with Film L.A. to produce a flyer, the productions could distribute, to let people know that this behavior is illegal. to let people know that this behavior is illegal, and to give LAPD the resources to make sure they can enforce those violations. And then fourth, we've asked DWP to look at a pricing structure around the film nodes that Mr. Alacon and I worked on. I was really happy last night, actually talked to somebody who drove by Ethan Broadway, and they said they saw a production there, and they saw them plugging into our DWP nodes, which we've done to help reduce pollution and noise in our communities, help reduce costs for filming, and to have good, clean customers for the Department of Water and Power. And we've done those in two or three places. But as part of this, we also want to look now that where else in the city we could probably have a couple dozen of these in filming locations that are used a lot. But we need to make sure that the pricing structure for that is predictable, that it encourages filming, and we want to work with DWP and have that back as well. So those are the four motions that are before us. I ask for your support today. Thank you, it's Mr. Krikorian, the work you've done in the state and continuing here locally. Mr. Alacon, when you chaired this committee as well. Bill and everybody else who's done a ton of work on this. And Tom Labange, who's sitting right there. Tom Labange, and save the best for last. The martial barristers, of the martial barristers. Thank you all for being such a film-positive counsel. And these will be four more steps that help us get towards that here in Los Angeles. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, just a quick comment, and I certainly appreciate, Mr. Garcetti, your leadership, Mr. Labange, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Kretz, and all 15, 14 members of the council that have obviously taken a deep interest in keeping film in L.A., incenting films to stay in L.A., create the jobs and create the films. I just need a technical follow-up. The filming items on today's agenda are not related to the economic incentives, but I would like to take this opportunity to request a report back on Council File 10-1473. This file was heard back in February of this year at the jobs committee. Mr. Alacon, remember that? And there were specific instructions for the Office of Finance, the CAO, the CLA, and the city attorney to develop a film tax incentive that would provide a refund or credit to productions that film a substantial portion of their project in the city. I believe that this possible refund or tax incentive in conjunction with the items on today's agenda to help smooth filming efforts in the city would also be a great deal of good for our local filming industry. So if we get that back, we can work within this whole concept. That was in the committee, okay? All right, your schedule, great.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you, colleagues. No one else on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well. Congratulations, Mr. Garcetti, and our great film industry of Los Angeles. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 12, called Special for Councilmember Cardnis.
Mr. Cardnis, number 12. Mr. Cardnis? They're going to find him.
Mr. President, would you like to hold item 12 on the desk and go to item 14, called Special for Councilmember Labange?
Let's go to 14. If you're holding 12, go on to 14. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, this is an item I just want everybody here on this for the Department of Transportation, for Capitol Projects, and Maria's here from the CLA. Is that correct?
Maria, CLA, there. She's taking the center table. Mr. Cardis, we'll come back to you in a moment.
Thank you. Just give us a quick overview, please.
Weiliao with the Office of the CAO and also staff to the Street and Transportation Projects Oversight Committee. The committee was formed by council this fiscal year, and the purpose of the committee is to work towards completing the projects that have been approved by the city council as quickly as possible. The report before you summarizes the short-term goals of the committee. The committee has been meeting since June 2011 with several departments. There were three main goals that were identified in the report. The first one is to identify the universe of projects that's in the queue, assess the status of them, and verify the funding. The report before you identifies 222 projects with total funding of $613.9 million. The latest number is 228 projects at nearly $631 million. The second goal was to identify roadblocks, come up with solutions and any issues. One of the issues discussed in the report is what we refer to as the E76 process, which is an approval process that the city has to go through with Caltrans on projects with federal funding. It's rather cumbersome in the sense that you have to go to Caltrans on every single phase to get approval before you proceed. Otherwise, you lose the opportunity to get reimbursed for that phase. We have met with the departments, and we have revamped the process. In the past, everything went through the Bureau of Street Services. Due to staffing reductions because of E-RIP, we're going to have departments process their own E76. And with this change, we hope to cut down on the timeframe it takes to get through the process. Of course, we need Caltrans cooperation in that endeavor as well. The third goal is to create a project management tracking database. We're working on that right now. We've started this process. The information you see on that spreadsheet for the Bureau of Street Services has been uploaded into the system. There's going to be some manual entries that's going to have to be done, for example, to designate the start and end phases of each step and as well as any workload or, I should say, work hour indicators so we can-
Okay, so just a couple of quick questions. We made a relationship with Caltrans, and we combined the Caltrans building, where the Police Administration building is, and we moved DOT into there to work together. Has that been effective? You're with the legislative office?
I would have to ask DOT, but it seems to be working a lot better. There are more communication.
All right, but you said it's cumbersome, and we put everybody in a multimillion-dollar building together to work together. We should find a way to try to lower the cost of operation, keep more costs on the streets. Also, and this is maybe a question to my colleagues. Years ago, when I worked for John Ferraro, we actually had sit-down briefings with departments. Did all council members or their staffs get briefed? Do you know that at all? And I only say this here is because the train moves fast. And unless you realize what's happening, you don't know some of these projects are there, or some that you know that shouldn't be there are there. Because you don't do council briefings like you did, and I know, and I'm talking just about the reduction in city staff in the last 36 months that is less than that. But the protocol has changed in the last decade or more, where you don't sit down and you go over these, because the CIP program, capital approval program, was erased. So it's all a little differently. So all I'm doing is bringing this up for members to be aware, to look at this, because I saw this morning's paper that the Congress is trying to do some six-year transit plan. And you know, if that does happen, that's good, but it takes a long time to get it done. So I just wanted to bring it aware of you, because there should be, Maria, circular opportunities to sit down with council members who are most equipped to know their districts and their relations.
And the departments have said that they've been meeting with the council offices on the list of projects. All council offices should be notified of the oversight committee.
I stand corrected. If you called my office and asked to meet with me, who can you meet with in my office? It's a nice tie you have on today.
Thank you, thank you. Ken Hustings with L.A. DOT. We have met with the office, but it's been on specific projects. It hasn't been as a list, the totality of the list. And just going back to your question about with Caltrans and DOT being in the same building, it has improved our working relationship. Matter of fact, frequently, we find whoever we need to speak to sometimes in the elevator, and we take care of business in the elevator, we go to lunch, but it has definitely improved our-
You get more done in the halls of City Hall than you do in city halls, so I got that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, but anyway, do the circulation just to make sure, members just be aware, because it's a very well-thought-out list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. Weezer, then Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weezer.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you, Mr. President. And we heard this in a joint transportation public works committee, and it was a good start for a process that I think the city needs a lot of improvement. First of all, as we noted in committee, there was a lot of mistakes and errors in those reports, different projects being attributed to different council districts, different timelines in each one of those projects. So we have a long way to go in terms of getting better handle on these projects and how they're moving through our process. Overall, the city of Los Angeles, it's very interesting to me how our projects move forward. It's, you know, sometimes they come to the attention of a council member, sometimes not, and it's pretty random sometimes how projects move forward. But I think if we get a list that is accurate and we get quarterly reports to the full council and the public, we could see which problems are, which projects are having problems. Is it funding? Is it whatever else it may be? And how do we move those projects forward? And we do it more on an equitable basis, and it's not, for one reason or another, happening in certain parts of the city or not. So we have a long way to go. I asked at the committee meeting that if the information given to us be improved by stating the date or year the project was approved, the date the project entered its current stage, whether it's pre-designed construction, anticipated timeline for next phases, any funding gaps, the earliest funding deadlines for each project. I asked that we could include that in the next quarterly report. And also, to look into the possibility of having improved technology and how we manage these projects. The technology is out there, it's probably off the shelf. I know when I was at L.A. USD, we created technology, given the massive construction program we had, but it wasn't too much to invest in, into technology that helped us keep better accountability and oversight over all these projects. So those are some of the issues I raised in committee. And at the next quarterly meeting with the Joint Public Works Transportation Committee, we'll have an update. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody. Mr. Labange was right on the mark about everybody knowing what's going on, because it is a basic part of our job to understand our streets and what we're doing on our streets and what they are. Probably the biggest question I always get are fixing my streets, or doing the alleys, or doing the potholes. That tied with the trees. And after the winds we just went through and the issues they caused, that's another big issue. But on this issue, I was very happy to hear we're talking about 228 projects-
Yes.
With $638 million. And just wanted to know, have you met this joint committee, the Street and Transportation Project Oversight, since we had that meeting on October the 12th?
Yes, we had a meeting in November.
Uh-huh. And in that meeting, did you have a DWP rep?
We haven't invited DWP to the meeting yet. What's been happening is we did get the mayor's office contacted, Wendy Yancey. But Ben, Engineering and DOT have been meeting to work through the funding issues on these projects. We want to give them opportunity to work as a working group. Then we'll ask DWP to come to the committee meeting, or work through any outstanding issues, and also formalize a process.
I think that's great, because DWP is a major player in this, obviously. And just to see their action, and I don't want to toot our horn, but we did get our power up, and Edison is still having issues with it. Edison charges more than we, and Edison, blah, 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 and so on. Now, competition is good for everybody, but we're doing a great job, and I'm very proud of everybody on that. So what happens next?
Well, the next meeting is going to be, is tentatively scheduled for January 12. We'll be updating this list. And CD14 had asked for a project to be reported on by Street Services. We hope to get that report, and then we'll continue to move forward.
Good. And then when you move forward, we want you, again, before the Transportation Committee-
Yes.
To give us an update on that. And I think Mr. Labange just pointed that every council member should clearly know in their district what's happening. And also, if they want to modify it, that's our job, is to know our land very well. And I hope those meetings with each district officially can take place. Not just unofficially, but that we can have a result status report of each of the districts, that this is what they talked about. This, they might have changed from what they had before. They might have added something, or they found one thing more prioritized than the other. I think all that information will be very helpful when you report back to our committee, so we can look at our colleagues in the room like this, and everybody feels that they're engaged in this issue. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Yeah, my understanding is they've been meeting since June?
We've been meeting since June, yes.
Great. And so when you look at the report, and I'm looking at the report right now, even with a magnifying glass, I can't read the letters or the numbers.
I know.
And then, not to be critical, but if we are able to look at documents that we can actually read, that would be great. And I don't sound facetious, but you know, I'm going through it right now and-
Let's show what size paper you receive, and I do admit it's a little bit challenging to read it. If you print the report on legis size paper, it's more legible, and we usually put that cautionary statement out there. Yes, you have it on, yes, it's impossible to read that. But if you print it-
This is how we read it.
Using your copier on the legis size, then you can read it. But that's, right now, we're limited to the paper size we have and using an Excel spreadsheet. When we have a database, we can do more modifications.
All right. So that was one of the more basic stuff, but you mentioned Caltrans, and you mentioned working with CRA, and you have various departments. Are the council offices invited to discussions when a project of their district is being considered and reviewed?
Well, the council offices are all on our distribution list for the oversight meetings. All your council offices get the agenda, the minutes from the last meeting, as well as any reports for that.
Right, I guess I'm looking at a more proactive approach. Is there a liaison that, let's say there's a project in my district, and there's a lot of things we're all doing, we're all doing a thousand things at one time. But will my office get notified and say in two weeks or one week, this project is going to come up for consideration and a review? What are your concerns? Is there that kind of a dialogue going on?
If there is a project that's going to be on the agenda, this council district-specific, we will highlight it when we send it out to your office to let you know that you're on the agenda.
But you're not-
We can add-
You're not communicating with a person. We're sending this report, right?
We're sending a report.
I think at this point, the last few months have been trying to get our arms around the universe of projects, and we're just starting to get into which projects may have issues, and we're working with the departments on identifying those. At this point, we haven't really identified a specific one in a specific district.
Well, you're not there yet.
Right. So if there is one, the department is doing most of the outreach to the council office. But if there are significant issues with a project, then yes, of course, we'd bring in the council office. But we're not quite there yet.
So when we started looking at applications for federal funds and state funds, are you communicating with the council and saying, we have an opportunity here? This is where the body wants to go, these are desired results? Are you communicating with the council office from that point of view? Or you're not there yet either?
We're not really looking at the future of the projects. We're trying to deal with what we have and how we're going to complete the ones we have. So if there's a new grant that's coming forward, that's not really under the purview of the Oversight Committee to notify and then to pursue the funding.
Okay, so we're just kind of doing basic housekeeping right now?
Yeah, right now.
And when do you think you'll hit that threshold? When do you think you'll reach that point?
Hopefully this fiscal year sometime, toward the end, at least getting, figuring out what we have and how we're going to do that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. That completes the questions from colleagues on number 14. So let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 12, called Special for Councilmember Cardnis.
Mr. Cardnis, number 12, sir.
Thank you very much. Is a representative from the CAO's office here? Thank you. I know we went over this in the Budget Committee, but not everybody has had the opportunity to discuss this. So basically, what's before us is we're preparing to go out with a negotiated activity on $125 million fixed-rate tax-exempt lease revenue bond.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. But in a nutshell, in layperson's terms, it basically means that we're going to be hiring some firms to actually go out and sell them for us, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the names of those firms, and how many of them are there?
There are three underwriters. They are Loop Capital Markets, Seibert, Branford, Frank, Seibert, Branford, Shank and Company, and William Blair and Company.
Okay. Are any of those California-based firms?
Yes. All three firms have either a L.A. office or a California office.
Okay. Are any of them headquartered in California?
Yes, Seibert's headquartered in California.
Not that this is a criteria for picking them. They're all, it's all based on their qualifications, correct?
Yes.
But they do let us know whether or not they're headquartered in California, whether they're women-owned or minority-owned, et cetera, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And on those notes, are any of them minority-owned?
Yes. Two of them are minority-owned. That's Loop Capital and Seibert Branford and Shank.
Okay. And the one thing that I'd like to congratulate my colleagues is that 10 years ago, we were basically doing business with 90% of the activity on these kinds of transactions on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, which amounts to billions and billions of dollars over the last 10 years. 10 years ago, we didn't have, in one deal, two minority firms actually taking a big part, a big role. Now we do, correct? Now we do, correct?
Yes, that's true.
And what are, what are the, the roles of each one of the firms as we designate and go forward on this?
The bonds will be sold in two series. For the equipment series, Loop will be the senior manager and for the real property series, Seabird will be the senior manager and William Blair will be the co-manager for both.
Okay. So, basically, we have two firms that happen to be minority-owned that are actually going to take the senior responsibility on the transactions.
Yes, that's correct.
That's one of the things we should feel really good about, colleagues, that 10 years ago, we never gave a minority-owned firm the responsibility to senior lead on a deal. So, and it is a big deal and people are talking about it around the country and people are giving these firms an opportunity to do the same in their jurisdictions across the country. So, once again, as California or in this case, as Los Angeles leads, the nation is responding and responding responsibly and giving very capable, responsible firms the opportunity to do business with them and to take on the responsibility that they're capable of taking on. So, the reason why I wanted to have this discussion, a brief discussion, is for us to point that out, that this was a long time coming in the City of Los Angeles. I'd like to thank the staff for putting together the polls that we discussed just a few weeks ago and to actually point out not only that these firms are qualified, but actually give us some additional information as we have other matters that are before us like responsible banking ordinance, et cetera, that none of these three firms, none of these three firms actually do commercial banking. They are focused on this kind of endeavor. So, they are definitely qualified, they are acting responsibly and there's no reason why we should exclude them and we're including them and they are, I believe that they will do a great job. Some of these firms have actually been doing business with the City of Los Angeles now for the last five or six or seven years since we've moved in this direction and they've, again, acted responsibly, have done a tremendous job for us and I look forward to them doing a, a great job on this particular transaction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon.
Councilmembers, I too, I want to follow up on Tony's comments. This is exactly the kind of, of a process that is reflective of the intent of the Banking Responsibility Ordinance. Staff has not only selected firms that they believe are ultimately qualified from a fiduciary perspective, but they've also given us information about what they're doing to reinvest in our community. One has an established office, another has contributed greatly to projects, to organizations that we have partnered with on, on development projects and housing projects and others and a third is, is, there was a reference to, let's see, hold on a second. Again, their, their contributions to the local community. One of the concerns in the, in the Banking Responsibility Ordinance was that we could not compare apples to oranges. Indeed, the CAO has to do that when they go through this process. That's, that's, they cannot avoid the, the differences in the various competitors in terms of size and scale and, and, and the kinds of history they've had. Some are huge multinational corporations and some are local folks. So, I think the CAO, just by recommending these firms, has demonstrated that they can make a difference. They can let us know how these companies are distinct from each other and that's why I believe we should include that kind of consideration on investments as well as deposits. But I do want to say, I, I thank the CAO for including that information in the report. We did end up with, with a couple of minority firms. Oh, I do want to correct you, Tony. When, the first year I was in office, we had a, a very controversial debate about a huge bond purchase.
It was the last one?
And I don't know if it was the last one, but it was, so that would have been 1994 and, and it was a, a joint effort between an African-American firm and a Latino firm. They, they prevailed and benefited the city some $35 million. So, I, I think we need to do more of that and that's, that's exactly why I introduced the Banking Responsibility Ordinance. I think this is an indication that we can do it and it'll be, it'll reap greater benefits in terms of reinvestment into our city. We will literally be able to create a race to the top of, of investment firms and banks that will want to do more things for our community throughout in order to gain access to, to our purchases of service in other categories. Caveat emptor prevails. We do not have to work with firms that simply provide us with a best price on transaction when we can get another firm that is providing greater benefits to the community as a whole. So, again, thank you, CAO, for, for your work on this, this project.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, thank you, Richard. I should give credit where credit's due. Back in 1993, there was a major debate right here on this floor with all but Alarcon's face being different. Alarcon is the only council member today that was actually involved in that debate and that tremendous battle, ridiculous ba, the same name. Richard Alarcon was the councilman back then. He's, he's rejoined the council and he was able to be part of that battle with other folks and, and it was, in my opinion, as I actually watched the tape, it was a deal on the Convention Center. I actually, when I became a council member, I actually watched the tape and what I realized is because of that particular transaction, the City of Los Angeles did something that no other jurisdiction in the country actually does and that is do 80% of their transactions like this competitive. And so, what happened is Councilmember Parks and myself started to embark on a journey of finding out why we are different than all the rest of the municipalities and jurisdictions around the, government jurisdictions around the country. And what we realized is there was this distaste for doing negotiated deals based on that Convention Center deal and that argument. But the truth of the matter is, as the numbers play out, because it's all public, that deal actually was good for the City of Los Angeles, was actually very good for the Convention Center and it actually benefited taxpayers of LA by millions of dollars. But for some reason, people said, we don't like to have those kinds of arguments or battles, so just the City of Los Angeles wholesale moved away from doing negotiated transactions and just thought they'd simplify it by doing competitive transactions. So, that's what I mean that if you take a snapshot of all of our three proprietaries and the City of Los Angeles with all the billions of dollars that we do in bonds, we were basically doing it different than everybody else in the country. And it was Bernard Parks and myself that went ahead and worked with our city staff and we moved back into a position where now the staff, the CAO's staff has actually admitted with what happened a few years ago with some of these, the biggest firms in the world actually disappearing. The fact that we now have a relationship with medium-sized firms and smaller firms, we are in a very great position to actually pick firms like this, very capable, and have them do the best job possible for the taxpayers and the people of Los Angeles. So, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Alarcon. That was a tremendous battle, but it left unfortunately the wrong kind of taste in people's mouths in the City of Los Angeles and we moved away from a responsible way in which we do business and we just basically were afraid to have those kinds of arguments on the floor of this council. But in my opinion, we aren't arguing about it now, but we, what we are doing is looking at the list of underwriters and we're looking at these firms and we're very, very proud of the business that they're going to do for us because they are qualified, they should be given the opportunity and when they have been given the opportunity over the last seven years since we've started to turn the corner, we have now said thumbs up, they have done a great job and we're glad that we now have a relationship with firms that before were settling for crumbs when they were responsible back then, they were capable back then and now we have the proof that they are acting responsibly and doing very capable work for the people of Los Angeles and at the end of the day, saving the people of Los Angeles and garnering more of a better investment for investors and also a better return for the taxpayer of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. And that will, sorry, we'll close the hearing in council. Go ahead on this one and please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. I'd like to recognize Mr. Zine for item number one.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item number one, and this is at the direction of the city attorney, on behalf of Councilmember Englander, 12th district, I move to approve the item as agendized to, number one, determine that the public convenience of, or necessity will not be served by the sale of alcoholic beverage for onsite consumption at Bishop's Lounge located at 8300 Tampa Avenue Suites A, L and M, Northridge 91324 inasmuch as the site is located in a high crime reporting district. And number two, deny the application for determination of public convenience or necessity for the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption at Bishop's Lounge located 8300 Tampa Avenue Suites A, L and M based upon the above findings and the negative influence associated with the sale of alcohol in the concerned community. And number three, instruct the city clerk to transfer this determination to the State Department of Alcohol Beverage Control as required findings under Business Professions Code Section 23958.4 and adopt the additional findings in the amendment. Request your support on item number one.
Thank you.
Mr. President, pardon me. The amendment that the council member referred to is Amendment 1A, which has been circulated and is now before council for its consideration.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and prepare the roll on one as amended by 1A. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. And forthwith on that, please. Forthwith without objection. And Mr. Zine, you had another one you wanted to take up, or I guess the next one anyways, number 19, which has been called special by the very same, Mr. Zine.
Yeah, yeah. This is item number 19. I just wanted to inform our great San Fernando Valley community that the West Hills Park, Adam Bischoff Soccer Field project along Valley Circle north of Anoan. Finally, after a lot of negotiations with the county and with the flood control, we will have a parking lot for the parents, bring their children to play softball, baseball, soccer at that location and this will also call for the installation of a traffic light so they'll have safe crossing along Valley Circle. So, it's a long time in coming. We've worked hard with the community, neighborhood council and the representatives from the softball, the soccer for our youth. And finally, it will be in place and hopefully before the season opens for softball. So, we look forward to that ribbon cutting. We did the groundbreaking and just wanted to inform the public that it is now happening after a long process and a lot of patience. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open the roll on 19. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Next, we have item 20 called special for Card. Mr. Sax, if you'd like to come forward on item number 2020.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon again, Arnold Sax. Item 20 refers to the Convention Center Modernization and Event Center project. Where to start? First of all, let's start with part three of this where it says authorize a director of planning or designee, designated to reimburse the office of the City Attorney, Public Works, Bureau of Engineering, Los Angeles Department of Transportation, Los Angeles City Convention Center, Cultural Affairs Department or any other city departments as needed for billable costs incurred on this project. I hope when they decide what the billable costs are to be billed, they use the same ratio that they're using for LAPD that builds Lawa because it sounds like a gold mine there. We could actually use some money there. Remember that and don't forget to have the LAPD do some billing for this project too because after all, AEG got free public safety from the Department of Transportation for all the events they held at Staples Center. Which reminds me, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for mentioning the big fight on the floor 1993 regarding the Convention Center because that would have been when the Staples Center project, the AEG LA Live project would have come into fruition six years before Staples Center opened up. So, what exactly did the city get out of that? Well, they got an arena. Yeah. They lost the opportunity to do any developing on the project because AEG got rights of first refusal for all the property around there for at least the next 15 years. So, there were no hotels built to enhance the Convention Center occupancy because AEG now owned the property. Real, real advantages for the city of LA, open and transparent. Plus, they got the advertising rights for all the buildings in the area or first refu, rights of first refusal. So, what did the city get out of that? Well, that's a nothing too. But this project is moving right along and the bond for the Convention Center, the $340 million, what's the status on that?
That will close our public hearing. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a motion that I introduce to ask or authorize the planning department to enter into a supplemental fee agreement with AEG for the master planned area that will contain the proposed farmer's field and the Convention Center modernization. Now, this agreement will allow AEG to reimburse the city for costs associated with the development. A preliminary cost analysis has been received and there needs to be further negotiation. There's some concern that there was a charge for an office chair and an itemized, it requires greater itemization on the expense side and I think that this is a good opportunity for both sides to further negotiate, AEG with city planning, city planning with AEG. So, this motion before us today simply authorizes the execution of a supplemental fee agreement and the approval of three position authorities. There is no specified monetary amount before council.
All right. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. Thank you. That is approved. Next, we had item 28. I called that special. Mr. Rosenthal, you had an amendment on 28 you wanted to add?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I want to thank my colleagues, obviously, for putting this motion together with the mayor's office and I'd like staff to come up. I want to ask a quick question on this. Staff, come on up.
I think it's COCLA.
Just, just for background information first, in 1986, tell me if this is true or not, okay? There were 147 new auto dealerships within the city. Today, there are only 52 left. From what I gather, we've lost 95 dealers over the last 25 years. The average gross receipts for each of the 52 new car dealers in the city is 60 million. This generates approximately $600,000 in sales tax per dealership. The population of the City of Los Angeles is about 10.7% of the state population, but it only has 3% of the new car dealerships. Are those background facts correct?
These are numbers that we've seen as well and we would want to take a look at them, verify them, but that's the, that's the information that's available to us right now.
Okay. Because that, that's a backdrop that, that really suggests what, what my colleagues have put together. I completely agree with the merits of eliminating the gross receipt tax on car dealerships as we continue to move in the direction of becoming a more business-friendly city. I just want to be sure that we have a full understanding of the fiscal impacts because as we all know, we're facing a $72 million shortfall in this current fiscal year. I want to be sure we proceed with caution and fully evaluate the short and long-term revenue implications of this proposal. I also want to ensure that the CAO, the Office of Finance and the mayor's office report back to the council before we vote on the final ordinance on the following. One, number of dealerships that have expressed an interest in moving into the city and how quickly this can happen. Two, the immediate fiscal implications, positive or negative, for this current year's budget. Three, the amount of time it is anticipated that the increased sales tax revenue will fully offset the loss of gross receipt tax revenue. And then, of course, I'd like to make a motion, colleagues, to move to add the mayor's office to instruction two, if my colleagues go along with this, of the jobs committee report. It, it says instruct the chief administrative officer, the office of finance to report back. But I'd like to include the mayor's office, obviously, in that as well. Do I have a second for that? Second by Mr. Caretz on that. Okay? That, that's where I'm at. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenthal. We have next, Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. It's just me and Mr. Zine's seat. I know, it don't look like this.
What happened to Councilmember Zine?
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. I was actually, since we had a pretty robust discussion on this last week, colleagues, I was just going to let it go through today, but I appreciate that, that input as well and I think we all look at those stats. We know that if we only... We know that if we only bought five of those back, Mr. Rosendahl, it would be the equivalent of all the gross receipts tax that the current ones have. So we know we just got one back, well, actually, two, BMW of Beverly Hills and Porsche of Beverly Hills. Those are two. If we get three more, more than enough make up for what we have lost. So I urge your support. You know, I won't go into a long speech today on our gross receipts tax. I think you guys know where we are, but this is an important step forward.
Okay.
And Mr. Englander, my co-presenter, who's not here, I nevertheless want to thank him. Thank you, Mr. Englander.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Garcetti, Councilman LeBarnes.
Mr. Ray, just let's go. Mr. Rosendahl, when you spoke about the numbers statistically, also the industry change, where they wanted to put everything together. They wanted to put them all in auto rows, where Cerritos or whether Glendale or whatever. And then also some of these old car dealerships, like Metropolitan, Chevy, and Silver Lake, which is between Mitchell Arena and Parkman, you know Silver Lake, that area right there, that moved and dissolved. So some of it was industry, but also a lot of it was tax. And then we didn't have land to create these type of auto malls that has taken place. So working with Mayor V. Ragosa, Beverly Hills BMW came back into Los Angeles, and they're right on Wilshire Boulevard. Okay, got a good spot. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, John Wickham.
Okay, so let's open the roll on the jobs committee report. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Pardon me, Mr. President. That is as amended by Councilmember Rosendahl.
As amended, yes. That was a friendly amendment. That is approved. We do have a special one.
Mr. President, I believe the maker of the motion will speak to the finding.
The city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since posting of today's agenda, city staff has learned that an item on today's Coliseum Commission meeting agenda may involve the transfer of Coliseum operations to USC. Immediate action is required for the city council to state its position before today's meeting. Council must first make findings pursuant to government code, Section 54954.2, before considering the substantive motion.
So let's take a vote on the findings. Please open the roll. Close the roll.
People want to talk on the findings.
You want to talk on the findings? Councilman Coretts.
My question is, when was the agenda for the Coliseum Commission hearing posted?
I was informed that it was posted late Friday, so after the posting of this agenda for Wednesday, that it was posted after that. Again, that's what I was informed.
Are we satisfied? Yes, Councilman? Okay, we move on? Okay, let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, this item is now before us. On the merits, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a very important issue that if you've followed the workings of the Coliseum Commission and the recent efforts to turn both the Coliseum and the sports arena, which are currently public entities on public land, to a private organization to run and receive the total benefits of that, of those facilities. It's important, in my judgment, that we take a position in the fact that the original JPA was entered into by the state, the county, and the city, of which then each organization, each governmental entity identified certain representatives to basically sit on the Coliseum Commission. It would appear to me that if the effort is going to dissolve that JPA and eventually in 2055 actually dissolve the commission as it currently is known, then it would appear that the governmental entities with the power of the JPA should be involved in that discussion. As I begin to read, as of yesterday, the deal points, it appears that, and again, what slowed the process is that the three members of the commission that were given the task to negotiate this deal signed a confidentiality agreement, which they did not share what the specific deal points until they put them on paper. And having reviewed them, there are some alarming things that reflect that with the deal points, that basically the Coliseum Sports Arena would be given to SC, and they assume control with little or no financial remuneration to the commission or the city, the state, and the county. There's also a concern as to naming rights, where they would get the total benefits from it. There's other issues that most and all of the equipment that's currently, and property currently owned by the Coliseum Commission, would revert to SC. We also have a concern as to the issue of no outside or independent financial analysis been done on this deal to give any indication of what the financial benefits would be to the private university or that would be lost by the three governmental entities. And so it would appear to me that it's in our best interest to go on record and really ask that this deal be vetted by one of the partners in the JPA, and that the final decision of support should be based on the policymakers of the city of LA deciding as to what the benefits or non-benefits to this governmental body versus a private institution. And so what my understanding today at the Coliseum Commission is that they will be giving directions to the negotiating team and their lawyers to follow up on these deal points and make them as part of the future contract that will go to 2055. And it appears from the record that they presented that SC is already in negotiation with the state for contracts beyond 2055. And so it's the issue is for a special one to come forward and put a position for the city council as the policymakers of this city as to its position on privatizing the Coliseum and sports arena. That has been a, since 19, I believe, '21, the Coliseum has been a public venue, and 50 years ago or so, the sports arena has been a public venue. So that's the rationale and hopes that we can, now that we're aware of the deal points that have been published for the meeting today, that this is something in which I would hope that the council would feel as strongly that we need to be more involved in this decision of turning a major, two major public facilities into private ownership, and particularly the impact on the larger park of Exposition Park, where we happen to have the largest wrecked park facility in the city called Expo Center. And it also houses our Rose Garden and a variety of three major museums that people take access, or spend literally hundreds of thousands of people take access to during the year. So I'd hope that I get your support that we, as a council, let the Coliseum Commission know without further understanding of the finances and the overall deal points and how it affects the park, the city, and our overall JPA, that we not allow this to go forward without our input.
Thank you, Councilor. We do have one card, but we'll go next to Councilman LeBarnes.
You want to take the card?
Well, let's go with you.
Mr. Parks, I love you, but I think the time has come. The time has come for the Coliseum Commission to make a partnership with the University of Southern California. The time has come, where USC has been the driving force in so many factions in downtown redevelopment, and having all the improved housing and driving the downtown housing force. The Coliseum's been left in a way that it needs love and support. And the things that I mentioned as an alternate to the Coliseum Commission, that is absolutely imperative in any agreement that a citizens' commission, not USC, dictate whose names are on the parastyle, which is so much part of our history, that that complex be made available if Los Angeles in the future gets the Olympic Games in the next years ahead, as it has hosted the '32 Games as well as the '84 Games. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Parks, but the time has come, like the time has come for the zoo. As you asked me last year when I sat over there, that we had to make a partnership with the zoo. Now we're in that process. The commission has been working on that. I could support your motion if it goes to committee and you have a hearing on it, but I think the time has come to have this relationship, because no one has been more important to the center of the city of Los Angeles than the old institution of USC, which I did not go to. Since 1971, when I was 18 years old, I've been to almost every football game there as either a camera assistant with NFL Films or NC2A Films, a Coliseum Commissioner, or just as a Raider season ticket holder. All that is saying that this is a place that needs a lot of love and respect to go forward. And USC is the only one who's going to step up here. So I would support it going to committee, but I think to make a statement now would be premature without knowing all the facts.
Okay, thank you, Councilman LeBarnes. Next, Councilman Coretts.
Yeah, I'm not really up on this issue, but I certainly have a lot of questions. The first one is, this motion, does this just express our opinion, or are we actually able to pull this back, send it to committee in some other way, vet this issue? And I don't know who would have the answer to that.
Well, at this point, what the motion would do is, it establishes a position in opposition of the transfer pending an evaluation of the benefits of the deal.
So I don't know that I'm opposed necessarily, but I certainly would want the chance to have the city evaluate it. I mean, I don't even know, honestly, whether the sports arena, although I would imagine maybe the Coliseum less so, has been a drain on the city's coffers? Have we been actually making money on it? Do we have ability to access it if, as Mr. LeBarnes suggested, we get another Olympics or something, and we need this facility, and it's essentially run by USC? I mean, is this a good idea? I mean, I don't have the answers to any of those questions. We've never really looked at this, as far as I know. So how do we answer those questions?
Well, that, I think, is exactly the point. I don't have the answers to those questions either. I think there needs to be a better understanding of the terms of the deal. There's some suggestion about whether the JPA would remain or not remain. It's my understanding that a joint powers authority can only be terminated by the governing bodies that entered into it. You know, so that's an issue as well. There is the wreck.
And that wouldn't be the Coliseum Commission, I presume.
Well, there is three parties. It's the state, it's the county, and the city. It's a three-party JPA. We do get some parking tax coming off of the area. There's the wreck facility as well, and the Rose Garden, and of course, it's right in the middle of the city, so there's a great impact on city residents as well. So the answers to those questions, I think, are what Mr. Parks is seeking.
And there could even be potentially a hybrid position, too. I would imagine where SC gets to access those, but we'd also, particularly if there's a significant need, get to maintain some access rights to it, like for an Olympics or some other major event where we really need to access an otherwise somewhat underutilized sports arena, for instance.
Well, certainly for an Olympics bid, that would be a very important element. You know, the two have been held there, and it's one of the most recognizable Olympics venues in the world, so.
Well, I don't know enough to object to the idea, but I do object to something so major being done with one of the city's major assets without the city doing anything to vet it. So whatever a logical process is to do that, I think it would make sense to have one of our committees, whichever one seems most appropriate, to at least take a look at this before it goes forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Next is Councilman Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I was a little hesitant on the findings, just because I didn't know what the basis was under Rule 23 to argue that the need for this action arose after the posting of the agenda. I think it's a close question, but given the posting of the Coliseum Commission, I voted for that. But having heard the description of the status of this, of where the commission is on this, it sounds to me, Mr. Parks, as though what's before the commission on their agenda is, as I understood you, giving instructions to the negotiating team of these particular deal points that are the cause for concern. So I gather from that that there are a number of steps that would still need to be taken. The negotiating team goes out and negotiates. The deal is reached, if a deal is to be reached. It would come back to the commission for approval of the deal, and so on. And if there were any dissolution of the JPA, as the CLA has indicated, I think that any dissolution could not be done by the commission. It would have to be done by the three parties to that agreement. So all that being said, this, these points raise concerns that we should be considering. But I haven't heard anything that suggests that we need to be concerned that something is going to happen today to deprive us, as a deliberative body, of our ability to analyze the substance of this and consider it through our normal process, here in committee, have representatives of the commission, representatives of USC, and others here to be able to provide the input that we need to make a truly deliberative evaluation of what our position is, which might very well be to oppose such a proposal. But honestly, as I stand here, I can't say that it would be or should be. I know these discussions with, between the commission and USC have gone on for at least five years that I know of, as to what USC's status should be and whether they should be a long-term tenant and so on. So I'm not seeing an urgency that needs to be addressed through a special motion under Rule 23 that couldn't be done through our normal legislative process. And I'd be happy to work with you in bringing it into Arts, Parks, and Neighborhood in a prompt way so that we can consider these things consistent with the timing needs of what the commission is doing and fully vet this. I do think the city needs to vet it, as you correctly point out. I just don't think that we should take a position preemptively in opposition until we have had an opportunity to really hear what the, all the issues involved are, because I, for one, don't know what they are.
Thank you, Councilman Coretts. Next, we'll have Councilman Wesson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members. I think we all share the concerns that our colleague, Mr. Parks, has. But I think that this might be premature, but maybe there's a way we can send a message to the commission, because I believe Mr. Parks is our representative. Maybe as a council, we can vote that the commission take no action today. Send it to Arts Parks, and then Mr. Parks can go to the commission meeting today at 2:30, indicate that the city council is opposed to action being taken today. I know there are a lot of concerns where it relates to the openness, but I think they're at negotiation stages, and I just think there are more discussions to be had. But if Mr. Parks would be supportive, I would think we would try to send a unanimous vote requesting that they not take action today, and that we send this to Mr. Coretts' commission.
Thank you, Councilman Wesson. Next on the queue would be Councilman Cardenas.
Pardon me, sir. Do we have a second?
A second. I want a second. Sir.
Okay, Councilman Cardenas.
Thank you very much. As we are on the last item today, we're probably, we're definitely going to be discussing this item longer than any other item on the agenda today. So I think that the old adage needs to be amended. If you don't want to get into an argument or disagreement, don't talk about politics, religion, or football. But in all seriousness, I think this resolution has merit, perhaps what, if we were to keep it the way it is, I think it should go through the committee process if the word, in the last paragraph, the actual action item of this, is that we oppose the current efforts to transfer operations. If we took the word "opposed" out and did something along the lines of what Councilmember Wesson is talking about, perhaps that they shouldn't take action until they vet it out more publicly and have the proper entities involved, I think that would be more appropriate. But I would like to commend our representative on the com- But I would like to commend our representative on the Commission, Councilmember Parks, for bringing it to all of our attention, because, as was mentioned by Tom LeBonds, I do love Bernard Parks as well, and you too, Tom, et cetera, but that's not as relevant as the fact that this is our stadium. I don't mean our councilmember's stadium. This is the stadium of the people of Los Angeles, the people of California, and quite frankly, looked on fondly by people throughout the world through the Olympics for which this Coliseum was built for. I think it's important that with all of that history and all of that responsibility, and this being a multimillion-dollar asset on top of that, that we do send a message to the Commission that this is not, it is never a time to rush something through. It's never a time to not properly, publicly vet something that belongs to the public. This is the time for us to act responsibly and make sure that this Commission doesn't move too hastily without having given enough opportunity for the elected individuals who are responsible for these assets, for the public to weigh in on what should happen to these assets. So I do agree with the need for us to make the voice of the people of Los Angeles heard through this council. And with all due respect, members, this is a resolution, not a motion. So I think that if we can come to an agreement, an understanding, that we can send our representative to a meeting this afternoon where this is on the agenda, for him to be able to speak on behalf of the city formally, not just as an individual, I think that that's the responsible for us, responsible thing for us to try to do within the next few minutes or so, so that he can have an appropriate instruction of strength on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, of which we're the elected body that has the authority to give those kinds of formal messages. So I hope that we can come up with something along the lines of what Councilmember Weston has just mentioned, and also give our representative, Councilmember Parks, the ability to walk in there saying, "This is what the city of Los Angeles, this is our position at the moment. This is what we're requesting, and this is what we'd like to see happen." And all it is is about fair and open transparency in this process of a public asset.
Thank you, Councilman Cardenas. Our next speaker is Councilman Alarcon.
Councilmembers, I think it's sort of a slam dunk to say we want to vet the issues. I think there's nobody that could possibly disagree with it. But we also want to be clear on our tone in the negotiation process. And I'm concerned when we say we oppose a deal that hasn't been presented to us, and I don't even know what the deal is. So I'm with Mr. Corretts on the issue of getting more information to the council. I would like, I don't know who would be in a position to give us an understanding. Maybe the CLA could schedule a time on the council where we could better understand the negotiations that are taking place. Number two, I just want to heed the words of our president-elect and say that we shouldn't move too fast on this and that we should let the process unfold. With all due respect to Councilmember Parks, who is closest to this issue, I don't know what we would be opposing. And for that reason, although I will say, we're not in a position to agree to anything at this point, but I certainly would appreciate knowing more about the subject. But I do agree that this is a citywide issue, because this is, it is one of the city's jewels that I don't think we can say we're proud of its condition. We would like to see much more benefit out of the Coliseum. We would like to see it beautified. We'd like to see it utilized most effectively in a diverse set of programming. And I think it's fair to say, as much as I enjoyed going to college games there when I was a little kid, in fact, I'll tell you this story. My birthday is November 24th, which was always about the time of the UCLA-USC game, and my father used to take me to the game for my birthday. And I remember seeing some of the greatest games occur there. So I'm very connected to it. I even saw Frank Sinatra, believe it or not, at the Coliseum. So the Coliseum is a very special place to Los Angeles, but we have to know what we're getting into. So I have to oppose the motion, because I don't know exactly what the objections are with the process. So I would recommend that we get more information. Mr. President-elect, are we, is there a way that we can get information that you would recommend?
Well, I would program with Mr. Parks to try to ensure that we could get that information. I don't think that, I mean, it's confidential now, but there's going to be a point, in my view, when they're going to have to give this information to the public, Mr. Parks. But what I would like for this council to do, to help you, is to say that we have concerns, and we can list a lot of the concerns that you have. And at the end, where we talk about what we actually want them to do, we would request that they not take any official action today. So I think they would know from this three-headed dragon that the city wants them to slow down so that we could be more engaged. And I also do have some concerns where it relates to the state. When I was at the state, I stopped the state on two occasions from voting to eliminate the Coliseum Commission. I'm very supportive of it, and I wouldn't want to do anything that would get them ginned up again. But if we sent a message listing all of the concerns that Mr. Parks has, that we share those concerns, and we request that they take no official action today, I would hope that that would accomplish most of what you wanted.
Thank you, Councilman Parks.
I think it accomplishes some of it, but let me just tell you the urgency. The reason that you've never heard about this is that it's being dealt with in closed session. And even though I have the book here reading it, I don't think I could even share with you the document, because it's in closed session, and it's being, and the three members that are negotiating it have signed a confidentiality agreement. So I don't know quite how I can bring you the very information that you're asking. So if none of you have ever heard of this, there's a reason. And the fact that the community has come in small numbers, it's not been well-publicized, because most community people couldn't even find the Coliseum Commission meetings. And so the issue that's being brought to you today is, to give you an idea of some of the relevant points, is that in taking over this as a private institution, they want to give the community and the Coliseum Commission, out of 365 potential days of operation, they want to give you five days that you can bring events to the Coliseum. They want to implement this on March 12, 2012, as it currently is written in this book. Today's meeting is to send these deal points to the negotiators and say, create a contract. So you will not know the public contract until it is brought to a meeting, to be voted on, to be implemented by April the 12th. When we say that we, Tom says, want to be in a partnership, my judgment, and I asked them, in addition, they wanted to give the total role to the SC. I asked them, I don't mind them having an expanded usage. I wouldn't mind them having exclusive usage during the football season. But to give them the remaining six months where they get to decide who comes to the Coliseum, through the whole year, they get to decide, all the revenue that comes in, it comes to them, all the signage goes to them, all the advertising goes to them. Those are major issues. And then when we think about the impact of the sports arena and the Coliseum on the park, which is a day-to-day park for many people, they, basically, those two facilities drive what happens in the park. And so when we talk about this issue, they also want to give the sports arena to SC for exclusive two-year redevelopment process. And if they're unsuccessful, they say, give it back to the Coliseum Commission. And so, again, you won't hear about this until the deal is cut and they approve it at the probably January or February meeting. Again, it's my judgment, and I think Jerry commented on it, is that the JPA was created by three entities, the state, the county, and the city. I don't believe the representatives working in their behalf can dissolve the JPA. But yet, in the document, it says, SC is already negotiating with the state for the 2055 contract, when this expires, to evolve and not have any longer a Coliseum Commission. That's dissolving the JPA. And so these are the things that are confronting us. Yes, we can't have Olympics. They made an allowance. If you ever get an Olympic, a World Cup, they'll make the stadium available. But again, if you want to have an event there, you better fit in with the five events that are currently scheduled, or else you got to go through their exercise and determine if they'll allow you to do it. That is completely taking it off the market. So that's what we're dealing with. Certainly, the language is saying, make no decisions. Again, I don't know whether they will even acknowledge that we have the authority for them to act on that. From what I understand, the decision today will be to move forward on this book that they presented and ask the negotiators to come back with a contract that will be implemented April 12th. And so that's what we're confronted with. We can go there and tell them, the body unanimously said, take no action, and I will pretty well guarantee you, they will vote, probably other than a couple of people, to move forward. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. Our next speaker for the second time, Councilman LeBonds.
There's the nine-member board. And if you read the sports pages, this has been in the news. Not as much as other things, but it has been in the news. No, no, no. You say you know nothing about it. It has been public discussion for many years, this partnership. I'm just saying that, because when you spoke, you spoke like it's like brand new. This has been going on. There's nine members of the Commission, okay? Three of them are board of supervisors. When is the last time, Mr. Clerk, has the board of supervisors ever listened to the city council?
I can't recall, sir.
Okay, so anyway, I'm just making a point. So what I would just say, Mr. Parks, and looking to what Mr. Weston said, instead of saying "oppose," that we review, that we review, and the committee reviews, and the city attorney, which they rotate the city attorneys, county, council, state, AG, they rotate. Right now, there's county attorneys who are representing the Commission there. It's a little different body than some of the bodies that you have all been on or off in joint powers agreements. So I would just say, if we wanted to try to say, to say "opposed," if we're looking for another word, say "review." And then if we review this, we do have opportunities, like we all do, if we want to challenge it. It is a joint powers authority, which we are one of three members. And I also will tell you, Mr. Corretts, UCLA, which you're very proud of, it's their home to play at the sports arena now. You know that? Because they're doing Polyfamili, which you've helped on. And they're also going to look at other issues in the future for the facility. The money has not been there. Remember, in the '84 games, any capital improvement that was done there was artificially done, because even the Olympics Committee, then head by Mr. Yubroff, knew that the cost would be prohibitive. All the beautiful parastyle was designed by a set designer. And forgive me for not recalling his name, because it was a beautiful transformation of the building. So it doesn't happen unless the USC says, we really want to embrace this. And also, these are partnerships that we should look for throughout our region as we go forward in these trying times. So I would just say, if you wanted to say "review" instead of "oppose," that may get in, then ask that the chair of the committee hold hearings on it. But we don't have any authority over the joint powers. So a recognition of Parks Commissioners, of which two are on, and Mr. Parks is the district representative, I'm an alternate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman LeBonds. Our next speaker is Councilman Kocorian for a second time.
I'm sensitive to the concerns that Mr. Parks has raised, and that is an incredibly fast timeline to be doing some really major changes in governance over an asset of the importance of, as important as the Coliseum is. I'm trying to understand, and Jerry, maybe you can help us with what steps would need to be taken for those things to happen by March or April? I mean, if the Coliseum Commission were to give its negotiating team instructions, what would happen after that? If you know.
Well, that would really depend on specifically what the instructions are and what the final agreement says.
If the instructions were to transfer operations, maintenance, and future redevelopment decisions at both the Coliseum and the sports arena to USC, what would need to be done in order to make that happen?
You know, in terms of operation, the JPA would have the authority to enter into a contract for operating. In terms of redevelopment and other issues, I'm sorry, I would have to talk to the city attorney and look at the provisions of the JPA. I do, my understanding is, that none of it would, if it's on state property, it would not be subject to local entitlement processes. So I'd need more clarity in what the JPA actually said and what they mean by redevelopment, what is contemplated.
Okay, well, I guess I don't even know the answer to that question. Is, the Coliseum is state property that's located in a city park? Is that not right? Is that not the jurisdictional?
I believe that, actually, that there are some parcels that are the city's, and some are the entire state. So, pardon me? It's all state property? I thought that there's, oh, the Coliseum and sports arena itself is state property.
Right, but exposition park is within our jurisdiction?
Right.
Okay. I guess my point, my point with this being, a lot of things that we need to consider, Mr. LeBonds just raised some arguments on the other side. I don't think that any of us are prepared to chart out the course that the city needs to take on this asset at this point. I think it does make sense to ask the Commission not to act, or even to say, we oppose any action by the Commission until it comes back here for further consideration. Just say, oppose any action whatsoever, you know, on this issue. And, Mr. Parks, I'd be happy to have a committee meeting even down there, if that's helpful. I mean, to try to expedite things and to get the broadest degree of public input. I just think that we need to vet that out a little bit more before we take that position. And I'm not sure if, from what I've heard, anything is going to happen imminently this week that we wouldn't be able still to address over the course of the coming months, although that is a ridiculously fast time schedule. The other thing, Mr. Parks, if your concern is that if we say something like, request that they take no action, and in your prediction, from having worked in the Commission for so long, is that they will ignore that request, by the same token, if we take a position in opposition, whether anonymous or not, I don't know why that would be any more compelling for them. So, okay, okay, it's just words. So if that's the case, then I would, I think it would be, we would be better positioned if we've had an opportunity to kind of exhaust this conversation a little bit more before we stake the city's position out on it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Kocorian. And our next speaker is Councilman Parks.
I don't think they're going to actually change their direction. I think what's important is that, for the first time, it's not an individual council member saying, why are you giving away these facilities? It's the whole council saying, we're interested. And for any of you today to say, I don't know anything about it, is a reason for that. They've not publicized their activity. And I think what's important, when we've sat in the meetings and a handful of community people showed up, the community people who have lived around SC, who said, we're concerned about, what they call them, the Pac-Man effect, of eating up the community as they go along, are different from the people who show up and say, they've given me a computer system in my school, they've given scholarships to my kids. Those are the people that SC brings to the meetings. The everyday people that live in and around that have a different view of what SC represents. And again, it's one thing, and the way they're addressing this, is there's a contract that goes to 2055. They're looking to expand on that contract by giving these new and different rules, but again, giving SC total control. Any major facility that we have, that you only get five, access to five events, is not a partnership. They are running the facility, and you're giving them all of the property you currently own as part of that deal. Now, I don't quite know how we get their closed-session items into our arena, but that's the only document we have, is their closed-session item. And whether they share it with us is the only way you're going to find out. And whether they share it with us is the only way you're going to find out what the deal points are. If they choose not to share it with us, then we will be reading about it in the paper at the ceremony when they sign over the agreement. So that's the dilemma, I think, we're in as far as the legalities of it.
Okay. Our next speaker, Councilman LaBange.
I just wanted to say something. I know someone said about history. Okay, in the 1960s, there was great urban strife in this country, and universities and colleges left center cities. USC had an opportunity to go to Pepperdine, out at Malibu, or Irvine. They chose to stay, and billions of dollars of investment later, the university has built it. And as seeing the Coliseum and looking at the underpinnings of the Coliseum and seeing how it's troubled, in our earthquake of 1994, it jumped up and had an 18-inch gap between rows 65 and 66, or thereabouts. This is a partnership that they're trying to do. Now, Mr. Parks is right. Let's review all this stuff here. But unless we realize that we have a partner in USC, they walk away one day. They go someplace else. If Farmers Fields comes, or if Mr. Roski Stadium comes, who knows? They love the Coliseum because that's their home. It's been their original home since it was built in 1923. I would just remember that because it's a partnership that's going to get us through all the challenges, and that's why they've been discussing this for well over a year, Mr. Parks. Now that we have the deals, let's look at it. Let's look at these opportunities and make sure certain things are protected in the park for the community. But the investment to do the real work that's necessary, which led the Rams to leave to go to Anaheim, which led the Raiders to leave to go back to Oakland, will not be done unless there's a partnership with someone, and that someone happens to be the University of Southern California.
Okay. Our last speaker is Councilman Weisar.
Thank you. I think Mr. Parks has brought up some very valid concerns and issues. I think the question we're trying to resolve is, where do we insert ourselves, and if we have an opportunity to insert ourselves, to raise those issues? Now, Mr. Miller, again, how does this process work? Will, when will we have an opportunity? And Mr. Parks brings this up today in our special one because him being our representative sees that this is the opportunity to do it. But I'm trying to understand, when do we have an opportunity to express the city's position on the dissolution of the JPA or the USC's acquisition of these facilities?
Well, you would certainly have to vote on disbanding the JPA. I actually, I would suppose the state and the county could do that, and it would, in effect, be disbanded if they voted to disband. In terms of weighing in on the deal, I don't know that there is any formal role for the You're represented through the representatives on the JPA itself.
So dissolving the JPA will require action by this council. Deciding whether, who the JPA gets contracts with to operate, maintain the Coliseum, it's a separate question. And what you're telling me is that we don't have a role in that as a council?
I do not believe, and again, you know, the city attorney has occasionally represented, you know, on a rotating basis, as Mr. LaBange said, represents the commission. So I'm not an attorney, but I don't believe there is any formal role for the council in the discussions of any master lease agreement with the University of Southern California.
Okay. And as Mr. Parks raised, we've got to do that. I mean, the fact that they would only give the community five days to have events there and other events like that, you know, it affects us as a city, and we should have some say. You know, the financials as well, how does that look? And then we own some parcels there. I think it behooves us to find that opportunity. I'm just trying to understand, or better understand, if it's today in asserting this, or rewording this, or, you know, coming back to committee and quickly coming up with a position that the city starts exerting themselves. And again, we're weighing that with these closed-session negotiations that are going on, that we may or may not be able to understand exactly what's going on. If the deal is made and cut, and then they ask, I mean, I guess at that time as well, we could, through resolution or motion, insert ourselves and give our opinion at that time as well, correct?
You could, you could certainly oppose it. There's nothing stopping you from asking that the negotiators present to the council in a closed session the terms of the deal. Again, I don't think that they're obligated to do so, but there is nothing stopping you, if they agreeable, to have in closed session a discussion of the deal points.
We could ask for that, for them to come and tell us in closed session their closed-session discussions.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Weisar. All right, we have two speaker cards, Arnold Sacks, and then we'll have Victor Hugo Alegría.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Interesting discussion. Mr. Kukorian mentioned a five-year discussion regarding Coliseum procedures. We heard Mr. Cardenas say, this is new information coming up. So what was being discussed in the five-year procedures? Policymakers for the city of LA, the non-binding MOU regarding the Farmers Field, non-binding, capping the ERIP program costing the city $30 million a year in salary increases, advocating to the public restoration of the hours for the librarians without presenting a source of revenue to proceed with those increased hours. Marana Collective's policy, or lack of? 8% favoritism for local businesses, locals defined as county and state. Three members chosen for the close, for this confidential agreement. Since when is three members a majority of a board that got nine members on it? And although we may not know what goes on in the confidential hearings, can't we at least know who the three members are who are signing this non-binding or this confidential agreement? And then discuss it with them? The impact on the parks that was mentioned and the museums? Well, if the Coliseum Commission doesn't oversee the museums, then what is the impact on the Coliseum Commission on the museums? Because I don't believe they're influential in any of the running of the museums. I believe that's a county, maybe a state part, so why even enter that into the conversation? Two-year development agreement for the arena. By the way, isn't the arena part of the Sports Improvement District? What's the city's development plans for the arena?
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, Victor Hugo Alegría.
My name is Victor Hugo Alegría. I'm looking for a little help. If you can forgive this ticket for me, please. Got no money to pay. I'm disabled. I can't work.
Sir, where do you live?
East LA.
East LA, okay. You have one of your deputies who may live in your district, help him?
Somebody from my staff will talk to you. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Clerk, what's in front of us?
Mr. President, at this time, we would have the motion to refer this matter to the Arts, Parks, and Neighborhood Committee and request the commission to take no action today.
Okay. And that would be the Councilman Wesson's motion. So that's what's in front of us now?
That is correct, sir.
So.
All right. All right. What?
So we can present it at the commission?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can vote it in now.
We'll write it out. We'll take it.
Okay.
Just amend, amend the same one. That way you can take it in writing, and you can just change it on the thing.
Yeah. Take it as an actual motion, and we'll make this an amendment to the motion, and we can change it, and you could have it in hand.
Okay.
That we approve special one with the verbal amendment by Mr. Wesson, and that we ask that a formal document be presented at the Coliseum Commission today.
Councilman Wesson?
Like I said, the amendment, in my view, should go in where this reads, now therefore be it resolved.
Okay.
So that needs to be altered or eliminated in its place that we.
And that's what's in front of us. Councilor Kukorian, are we okay?
That's right. That's.
All right. Okay, so let's open the roll. Councilman Parks?
Let me just clarify, what we're saying, remove the currently resolved and just say that they take no action. Is that the replacement language?
That they take no action today.
That we take, that they take no action is the substitute language?
Right.
Let me just ask a question.
Take no action until the city of Los Angeles can review it.
I mean, you want to have an action.
Right.
Okay. If you're ready to do that.
Okay, so we're all clear?
Yes, you're going.
All right. So we already take the vote? All right. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, let me action this body. Thank you very much. Next order of business?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Was posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Any announcements? Councilor Rosenthal?
President, I just want to make sure my constituents know that we have put a holiday homeless project in place, and people are responding. It's incredible. This drive is to get basic stuff for folks who will be going to the emergency winter shelter program. We have over 200 beds right now on the West Side through mid-March. We hope to extend it year-round, by the way. And I would like to get support for toiletries, razor soap, toothpaste, feminine hygiene products, foot spray, deodorant, combs, all of that, and clothing, men's underwear, women's underwear, socks, T-shirts, all the stuff that people wear and need to wear just to make it, backpacks, reading glasses, these kinds of things. And if you're up to it, coffee creamers, all that, we want to take them to our shelter. But if you could drop the stuff off at our Westchester office at 7166 West Manchester Drive, or to my West LA office at 1645 Corinth, or down here at City Hall at my room 415. People are being very generous on the West Side. I appreciate that generosity. Continue to do it so the holidays can be warm and positive for the homeless. Thank you, Mr. Park.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councilman Parks?
Yes. I'd just like to ask if we get special one forthwith so we can get that document today. I'd just like to invite the public to a couple of events. The Ninth Annual Tree Lighting at the Constituent Center for the Eighth District, 8175 South Vermont, will be held Thursday, December the 8th at 6:30. Also, the Ninth Annual Toy Giveaway at Baldwin Hills Shopping Center, hosted by the Eighth District, will be Saturday, December the 10th at 10:00 AM. And then also, we'd like to invite the public to a small business lending forum that is being sponsored and hosted by the Crenshaw Christian Center. A business source is hosting it, but it's going to be held at the Crenshaw Christian Center, 7901 South Vermont, and it would be held on Thursday, December the 8th at 8:30 to 12:30, 8:30 AM to 12:30 PM.
Councilor LaBange.
And our very special Angelina, Ms. Audrey there, she gave me a card here. I'm introducing in Mr. Zions' district, the Pacific Lodge Boys Home. Please stand, young men from the Pacific Lodge Boys Home.
Welcome to City Hall.
Welcome to City Hall, young ladies. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman LaBange. Any more announcements? Say none? Adjournments? Okay, please all stand for adjournments. Councilman LaBange.
Members, a great firefighter who retired back in 1977. He came on the job in 1943. He worked my neighborhood when I was a young council aide at Station 35 in the Las Feliz District. Over the years of retirement, he participated much in the revitalization of the Fire Museum, which is located in Hollywood at Old Station 27. I ask we adjourn in memory of Kurt Basor, a great captain of Task Force 35, who passed away here on December 3rd, and he served the city well for many, many, many years. He survived by family and friends, Kurt Basor.
Any other adjournment motions? Councilman Parks?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have two adjournment motions. First one is, I ask we adjourn in memory of Michael Graham, who passed away October the 18th, 2011. He was the director of the Eagleston Youth Center in Los Angeles in Baldwin Park, working with at-risk and unfortunate youth. He also owned the Michael O. Graham Apartment Properties in Los Angeles, where he provided affordable housing to a variety of clients. He was survived by his family, host of family members. Funeral services were held Saturday, December the 10th at 11:00 AM at the Morningside United Church of Christ at 8722 Crenshaw Boulevard in Inglewood. I'd also ask that we adjourn in memory of Wilma Iona Brown, who was born in November 1926 in Allendale, South Carolina, passed away November 2011. She attended, been at college in South Carolina for two years. Her education was interrupted when she was married to her husband Jim Chitty. She is the mother of three different, three children, Vera, Rose, and James. She also later moved her family to Los Angeles, and where she then had a fourth child, Tyanna Bowman, and who passed away in 1974. Wilma was an active member of St. Stephen's Church, in which they occupied the same pew each and every Sunday. She struggled with chronic illnesses over the last few years, and she moved from Chicago to Los Angeles so that her son James Chitty could care for her. She survived by her son James, daughter Vera, and Rose. Funeral services were held on Friday, November the 18th at Faithful Central, Faithful Central Bible Church located on 333 West Florence.
Okay. Second by Councilman Perry. Any other adjournments? Say none? Please call the roll. We are adjourned. The next meeting will be December 9th. Thank you very much.